At six o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. Whatever one please join in.
The flag of the United States of America. For which is stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, God.
Here.
Here.
Corey Oxford.
Here.
I'm Bob Barker.
Here.
Jerry.
Here.
Okay, we'll have a forum, we'll move on. We will have the agenda, everybody had a chance to look over the agenda. Questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the September sixteenth minutes. From our last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections that the council sees? I have a motion to go ahead and approve the minutes from September sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move on to approval of the bills. We have deposits in the amount of two hundred and fifty one thousand, eight hundred and fifty two dollars and fifty two cents. Counts payable in the amount of a hundred and eighty four thousand, six hundred and ninety five dollars and forty seven cent. Transmittals in the amount of twenty three thousand, three hundred and seventy six dollars and forty three cents. And payroll in the amount of sixty four thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars and eighty eight cents. Questions? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve the bills?
I'd make a motion to approve the bills.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, well, any correspondence?
None.
Okay, and we'll move on to items from the public. Susan Marriage is up first.
Thank you for letting me speak real quick. I'm just letting you know that we are having once again another town cleanup. And I just wanted to let you know that the town cleaners we've had in the past have been small and lumber, but mighty in the amount of garbage we've been able to pick up and the amount of things we've been able to clean up. So typically, we sometimes leave stuff and Emery will come and pick it up, or if we just feel like we want to fill up a truck. We filled up about six truckloads of garbage just throughout the summer, so. And anyway, so it's been really a good process. And our next step is, at this point, we will have a finalized letter that we'll be sending to nonprofits, organizations, schools, to try to get them to maybe adopt a space is what we'd like to do overall. And just start getting that, all these spaces cleaned up on a regular basis. And hopefully that's helped Emery. I, you know, it's been good for us and nobody cares if we have to take a truck loader or two out to the dump anyway, so.
Right on.
It's been a really good group this year, and hopefully it'll grow a little bit each year. And we're hoping that letter will work to, in conjunction with the May Day. Are they gonna have a May Days? Yeah, spring cleanup. That's, I think that's pretty common to have that, you know, every May Day they do that cleanup. So we're hoping we'll get a date set and then we'll hope to have a spring cleanup with the other groups. So just wanted to let you know. And we will be doing this Sunday, the fifth. We're gonna do it a little earlier in the morning. Get a, do one last cleanup, we hope, before snow flies and then call it good for this year.
Maybe it's not one.
I hope not. But, you know, I know Hunter's wanting to, so they can have it.
Well, thank you. And be sure and take that back to the boards.
Oh, I, I will. I'll let them know. They've been a good group and, and pretty dedicated, so. A little tiring sometimes, but it's been good.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Amanda Notwell.
Has no information yet.
I like your shirt. You look like a quaky tree. I like quaky tree.
Thank you. Okay, so on that permit, I was approached on Friday about possibly getting this put together. And I was driving home, but then on Monday, so I put this together in two days. The CCSD number two, Mental Health Fund, was depleted with recent events. So what we've come up with is, we're gonna call it, and we've approved this with his parents, but it will be called the Easton Mason Memorial 5K. It'll happen on November first of this year. Next year we'll change the date, but a hundred percent of the proceeds will go to CCSD number two. So I'm not taking a cut. Joe Elder's helping. He's not taking a cut at all. And it's to replenish those mental health funds that they've used recently. So they contacted me because I do the Fourth of July. I have all the stuff saved. I think this, I don't think it's gonna be as big and with traffic. I don't think we need to close the bridge. I have enough volunteers so far that we're gonna station people at either side of the bridge with flags as, for safety. But you know, we just have so many people in town.
Or do the same route.
It'll be the same route that I use for the fourth, because I've already mapped it out, I know.
Good plan.
Yeah. So Joe and I are assist, that's why I'm here tonight, is we're assisting the two individuals that are putting this actually together, but taking responsible, we're taking responsibility. I just haven't advertised it because I wanted approval. Before, I'm like, hey.
Does council have any questions?
Nope.
No.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve this special events application for November first, twenty twenty five? For the Memorial 5K run?
I'd make some motion to approve this.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think the only thing, like, I'll keep contacting you when we get closer, but if weather-related, stuff like that where we might.
Start on South River again, so we'll be closing people off on South River also.
I mean, yeah. I would like to close those, not so much the bridge, like.
Not the bridge, South River.
Yeah, we'll just close. There's not much traffic. I know, just saying. But for weather-related, like if we have to, like, get cones or something from town or something instead of just my flags, if there's snow or something.
Well, we'll get phones anyways for closing off.
And so I invite you all, they are, we're taking donations as well. If you don't want to do the 5K in there, I got the shirts finalized as well, so they'll have those.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a good thing.
I'm sorry that I'm not gonna stay. I have to go feed children.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, we'll move on. Any council comments? Okay, we'll move on to reports from departments, town hall. Have nothing to report?
Wow.
I like that. Everything's going okay, huh? I'm gonna ask the treasurer for backup here. Okay, we'll move on to the police department.
Mayor, council, you're welcome. I'm not asking for anything this week. Quick report. Actually been busy. We've had two hundred and nine calls for the last council meeting. We have increased our hot pool checks due to the other incidents that have been going on. We haven't had any other incidents, but we have had forty two hot pool checks since our last council meeting, averaging about three a day. Then the officers are getting out, doing full walkthroughs through those, checking everything down at the hot pool area. Updates, we're still waiting on the three vehicles. Just got videos and pictures tonight of one Ram that was done. Our is supposed to be going in next, so hopefully, fingers crossed, it should be ready and hopefully here next week. If everything stays according to the builder's plan, but everyone knows what they say about best-laid plans. Tahoe, all the equipment's arrived in Cheyenne, so that should be getting put together and ready here in a few weeks also. Other things we're working on, was working with Emery today on the survey for the ORB stuff we discussed at the last council meeting. So that survey should be going live online, hopefully in the next couple of days, and we'll be getting flyers made up and sent out. We'll have the links to all that as well as blasting it all over social media.
Are you gonna do like a QR code on your flyers that'll take them directly to that link?
I already built one, but now we're changing it, so I'm gonna have to have a new QR code for the new survey. We're changing wording in one part of it. But that'll be ready tomorrow morning with a nice QR code with our town logo in the boat at middle.
Perfect. I think you're gonna get a lot more, generate a lot more leads off of that.
But we are also doing a fill-in form on the back of a card for less technical, south savvy people. Go in, drop off a town hall, give it digital. But I'm gonna make some flyers with QR code and just the URL and call so on it. Put out places.
Let's get it advertised well.
Yep. I'll throw, make an ad in the paper with both. Have an advertising budget, I will use it.
Okay.
And I think that's all I've got.
Any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
Okay, we'll move on to the fire department. Did Creed send over any additional information? Okay, well, they have their meeting tonight. I'm gonna talk to them and see if we can get one rep to come at least once a month, if the second maybe. We transferred some funds around into the wild class account. And we have fifty thousand dollars that we want to transfer into the fire department's fund. That'll give them a hundred thousand in their fund and make some interest. And I wouldn't bring that to the council's attention, see if, if there was any opposing or any other questions. Okay, do I have a motion to go ahead and transfer this fifty thousand dollars into the fire department wild class account?
I'd make the motion to transfer the fifty thousand.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All we have on the fire department. We'll move on to the recreation department.
Evening, gentlemen. The first order business I have is I'm gonna purchase two desks. As you guys know, we recently hired a assistant director. The desk that I currently have is probably, when the school is there. Extremely large. And if I were just to buy one desk, I probably wouldn't be able to fit in there with how big my desk is. I thought two desks could be sufficient.
Okay. You have budgeted.
Yes, the capital equipment budget. Going to that to the code.
Questions? I suppose we can afford a desk for
Two desks.
Two desks, so somebody else would have one.
Well, I mean, I'll paint you a little picture. So like mine takes up probably ninety percent of the office currently. And her desk is probably double this size.
Anyway.
Can you put your legs in it? I'll have to put your legs in.
Cheryl, take a motion to go ahead and purchase these two desks for the recreation department?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and purchase the two desks for the recreation department.
Total amount is three thousand, ninety five dollars and twenty one cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So secondly, I'd like to introduce you guys to a face. Firstly, I'm grateful for you guys approving the hire of Amelia. I think that puts rec department in a really good position. You know, she's very ambitious, very willing to, you know, help with the recreation programs and the community events at large. If you want to mount up.
Well, really grateful for the opportunity. It's been so good so far. I'm excited to see if the new programs or the current ones. I'm excited. It's gonna be really good.
Yeah. Well, good to have you aboard.
Outside of that, I couldn't give you guys a little update what we have going on at the rec, so. This is the beginning of the third week of flag football. We did get our new NFL flag jerseys. I think overall, the consensus said it's a pretty cool thing. I think the kids really like them. It's been nice to replace some of the old equipment. We also have, are in the process of, with this Public Works guys' help, removing old equipment out of the weight room and getting ready to install the equipment. So that's pretty cool. We also have, Amelia and I have joined Fall Festival. And we have kind of teamed up with the school to do a pie or educator where the students or volunteer teachers, coaches, when not can sign up to be pied. And what it will go to, we'll split it fifty fifty with the school, so they'll fifty percent of the proceeds will go to the elementary school's student activities fund, and fifty percent will go to the high schools' student activity fund. If you're bored on October eleventh, it will be from ten to one. That's about it. Any other questions?
Questions for credit?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, quarter.
I'll talk these two into pretty quick.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to Department of Public Works. Mr. Emery.
Gentlemen, revisiting thirteen and fourteen water and sewer ordinances. We had passed the front reading a few months back. And we were kind of updating the sewer fees in accordance with the current ordinance. And once we did that, we realized there were some incongruencies with usage actually going into the sewer and what people were being billed. So we came up with being everybody on a EDU table. So people get billed more in accordance with the actual demand they're putting on with the sewer, not just based on the amount of water that they're sprinkling their lawn with. So we did get that built and put in there. We've put a little bit of clarifying thing, language in on a couple words. That was the only big thing that was changed. I did kind of bounce off with Kylie about getting some kind of escrow thing set up for subdivisions. We kind of hold land and title until it was done. In lieu of some fees, her ultimate consensus was that if that becomes a problem, let's just revisit this and change it. She's like, if we implement that, that could be, it might be easier just to amend our ordinance again in the future to make that more workable than try and implement a policy that could be a problem, trying to get people to put land in escrow and then calling in on it and trying to sell it, get our money back and everything else. So she actually ultimately recommended we just kind of leave it. And if it's not, it becomes a problem or hinders development, you guys can three readings and we can change it. And so, and I, I think that's, I think it would have been better. So, you know, with what we changed, I think it would be responsible to just start the three readings over again. Just, it's been so long since the last one, we did the EDU table. So if we're gonna move forward with them, I would, would pick it up on the second reading. I would just start over. The title is much shorter than the last one.
Done now.
Would you go ahead and read this one, Mike?
Close. Like, go rewind and then go on to the other.
Yes, we'll do them separately.
Okay. Town of Saratoga ordinance number eight eighty four. An ordinance amending title search, division one, water. Ordinance amending the regulations and procedures governing the operation of the town's water infrastructure. Infrastructure. The amended aspects of this enterprise fund include that are not limited to daily operation maintenance, construction, billing, and fees. This ordinance repeals and replaces Title thirteen, Division one, water, in full and provides an effective date.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance number eight eighty four on its first reading?
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance eight eighty four on its first reading.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to the next one, please.
Sir, to the ordinance number eighty five, an ordinance amending Title thirteen, Division two, sewer, and ordinance amending regulations, procedures governing the operation of the town's sewer. Amended aspects of this enterprise fund include that are not limited to the daily operation, maintenance, construction, billing, and fees. This ordinance repeals and replaces Title thirteen, Division two, sewer, in full and provides an effective date.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance number eight eighty five on its first reading?
I'll approve ordinance eight eighty five on its first reading. I'd make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey, moving on to number fifteen. It is in a packet. I did print out bigger app, so I can kind of see what we're looking at. There, so the change order's not, we're not requesting additional for the same work. We're, we want to adjust quantities on two lines. We want to take them out of the CIP, which is the lining process, and put them in the open cut. With, in, in prior to lining, the CIP guys always come up and do their own cleaning and their own cambering, and they give you a report of like, hey, these are ain't fixed before we line them. So we did get a, a better look at a few sections on A. Did find another stair step in there, and then we were having some camera issues. So when we were cambering it, there was some good eight-inch plastic off the leg. It's actually up at the top, so six inch in the middle, an eight-inch run and another stair step. And then Y and B, kind of same thing. So by the time we go in and remedy all those things, open cut, so we can line it, you're already over there, you're already in there. It makes more sense to us to just fully replace it, brand new, all the same size, brand new pipe. We're not kind of band-aiding it just to get a liner in there. It could, like, cost a minute diminishing returns, I think, is at that point. These other lines in blue were great. There's a couple bellies there on that line. Or shot six there, that pretty easy fixes. The other lines, these big long runs all looked really good. Those will line great. They figure they have no issues with those at all. So that's what the change order is for, is to take line A and B out of the CIPP and just put them in the open cut. So, I mean, it's almost a thousand feet. By the time we get all the chin there. We talked to the board about, we had a couple special meetings, the joint powers board, and they agree that that's best path moving forward. It's still a part of the special purpose tax project. Those were the lines on there.
We've got the money?
Yeah.
Is Rocky Mountain good with this?
Yeah, there was another one. I think I figured out the one that didn't have Crystal's signature on it, but we do have a, yeah, she's right. Bottom right there on the front page. That's her. She's all.
Oh, okay. All right.
That does add forty-five days of the contract. It takes a lot longer to dig the nine or do a thousand feet than it does align it. And the lining guys will be in here on the eleventh as their plan. They'll probably be out here in like two or three weeks.
Okay, do I have a motion to go ahead and approve this change order in the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars?
I'd make a motion to approve the three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars for the change order.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Just a couple of updates. I did have a meeting with Whiteout on our tap grant project. Seen contract documents for that. Right towards the end of the year, we've got to go, everything's got to go to the attorney general's office and got to go white out, this guy goes. So that contract becomes effective January first, and as soon as that kicks off, quite a few steps because of the grant money involved that we'll have do a little bit of environmental review and whatnot, but we kind of, we'll shoot it, and there's quite a few things I can do now to get everything lined up that will pull the trigger on the first weekend. Keep whacking away at stuff. They're pretty excited. I think they're gonna be good to work with. Be a pretty good project. So, I mean, all those processes shouldn't be too intense. We're not digging in a Indian camp or anything like that, or in Raptor territory, so.
Still looking at twenty-seven.
They will run it out till then. If we get everything done, we could try and go to bid as early as we want, but they're gonna have, we go to bid and it comes back high. And it's outside where they normally bid projects. They're gonna want us to wait and be bid. They, October bids, they said they always have lowest prices. It all. Okay, we'll push it along as fast as we can, but we've got a threshold we gotta try to stay in.
Sure.
Also, and we had a pre-permit filing meeting for the sewer river project. We'll try to, we're gonna have everything put together by the end of the year for the permitting. Unfortunately, all the nationwide permits, which is what we would fall under, are getting renewed or expiring and getting renewed like in February. So we can't, they recommended we not submit anything until March, because if we submit it in February and get it approved, we'll have to re-submit it anyway, because it'll expire in like a month. So that was, I was hoping to have all that done, submitted, approved, and everything by March, but we'll get everything ready and have it kicked in. They said, you know, ninety days to get it approved at the most. So keep working on that. Um, we'll start getting ready for winter, kind of getting things buttoned up around the shop, around town, finish the last couple of kind of items we got laying around. And then, um, we'll start snowing, we'll start plowing. Should be like next week.
Could be.
This weekend.
Don't speak too loud about that.
You guys got any questions?
No.
Just, I want to relay a compliment. I received a text message today. Not actually sure who from, but they were complimenting us on uh, never forget park in the parking lot and how nice it was not to walk in mud and hope us to keep up the good work.
Awesome. It is, it is nice to not walk in.
That's how long they're, they're gone.
I will, I will. Um, planning commission, were you ready for that?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Um, we've got a public hearing here in our next, uh, meeting, which is actually on the fourteenth. I thought it was next week, but the way the, this month falls, I guess it's actually in two weeks. So we'll have that then, and then you guys will, um, because it's a zoning amendment, you'll have to have a public hearing on it also. And then we are having a rough draft. Of some ordinance language we were looking at clarifying, um, so I'll have that ready for the Tuesday meeting. They'll go over that. There's a couple of things like with the variance procedure, they wanted to be able to understand a little bit better. Just to, um, goes for some working with Kylie and on that and getting a draft. To make that a little bit more helpful. Um, the new maps printed out, hanging up in town hall. So, yeah, another ton on that.
When, when are we going to get that and stuff over from Lopez or have you?
Um, I think you have to check. You have to check. So as soon as we, you know, so as soon as we get the check over to them, you've got it on his computer. It's just a Dropbox link and.
Okay.
Download it.
Perfect.
I still am working on the GIS map with the planning for the website too. It was worth looking over a couple of things and making sure that they can do exactly what I want before we come up with any kind of proposal. We had like a minor misunderstanding of what I was wanting.
Okay. Any questions? Hey, water and sewers?
Uh, the town, the powers board, that was probably the primary thing we discussed was that special meeting was this change order. And then we'll have a meeting here, I guess in two weeks.
On the fifteenth, how's that going to affect this meeting?
That's a good question. Guess we could cut me in two.
Have you looked at that? How many meetings?
It was pretty rare of like this. Went over it just because it's the, for the only one time it happens is when the first lands on a Wednesday. Every other time it should work out.
Okay. Well, we'll make it work so you can get over there for a little bit too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
If it was, if it were to become too big of a deal on the JPD meeting and stuff, but we were looking at the calendar, I think like, I want to say this is the only one here that it was going to happen.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Thought we'd hurry and get it over with.
Any question for Emery? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Emery.
Okay, we'll move on to the recreation commission.
Nothing new to report. We didn't, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. The next meeting is next week on the sixth, six o'clock here.
Okay.
Just last.
Saratoga Airport Advisory Board, nothing to report there. Uh, their next meeting is October thirteenth. Uh, at three thirty PM here at the town hall. South Central Emergency Medical Service, their next meeting is October twentieth, twenty twenty five at six PM in Hannah. Do you set that board, John? Do you go to that meeting?
Not.
Okay. You sure knew a lot about it today.
Worked out with board member at nine.
Anyway, um, they're still in the process to get people hired. So, is there any new business to be brought before the town? Yeah. No executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'd make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yes.
Just a volunteer made a statement.